All rise, this is the Harville County Court of Appeals and Countess Sessions. The Harville White Deal with be presiding. This court's main session, the Harville White Deal here.
Go forward, you have an education.
By our head please. Our kind and gracious Father in heaven, as we assemble this evening and give you thanks for all the blessings that you've got, say fifty to your soulful fathers. While we pray for our spirit to be with us tonight in the Gulfland County business and the things that you do, we ride and talk on my side. We ask you to bless us that we have patience and, you know, we remember there are many. And we ask your Father to watch over us as we travel from here and go home this evening. Rest assured, there you are when you guide us through the wreckage with our spirit now. And we ask the Christ of all women, amen.
Amen. Our place denied by Michigan Justice Johnson?
The religion is to fight the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary Lee Adams, Mary Bayes, here. Ken Bogmacher.
Here.
Jay Burton.
Here.
Gary Williams.
Here.
Bill Ferguson.
Here.
Jerry Ford.
Here.
Paul Rager.
Here.
Chris Martin.
Here.
Chris White Deal.
Here.
The Johnsons, here. Richard Johnsons, here. David Nolan.
Here.
Amber Russell.
Here.
Harris Thomas.
Here.
Mary Wall.
Here.
State District.
Here.
Karen Farm.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight being present at the particular thing in the gallery. Appreciate you being here with us tonight. Uh, first item on our agenda is to approve amendments from September twenty-third, commission meeting, later in your package. If we have any corrections, please refer to make a motion approved. A motion by Commissioner Wall to approve amendment to the last meeting. And second by Commissioner Christopher Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Amendments are approved. We have a few announcements. The Pennsyl County Services Administration Fall Conference starts tomorrow through Thursday. I mean, multiple several of us are going. Uh, if you drive in tonight, some drive in early in the morning. Looks like it's gonna be a good, a really good conference. A lot of information to come out of it. And we will do our best to represent the county well and bring back information, hopefully good news for some of the projects that we're hopefully coming our way and get to the transportation and things of that nature. Uh, one other thing, the surveys that I sent out to everyone last month, I received twelve back. If you haven't done any, please get that to me. I'm waiting on those to do the, the look over the committee assignments. And I plan to do that this weekend when we get back so that we have a conference month. And I'll lay them all out to everyone or get no later reports today. The Board of Education is hosting a dinner for the commission on November the fourth. That's next Monday night at six o'clock at the elementary school. And this is just a thank you and opportunity to bring us up to date on the progress of what's done at the elementary school with the renovation to give you a chance. Last year, we were there and we were showing the things that were going to be done. And this year, we're gonna see what happens. If you can, please be there on the twenty ninth and please RSVP. And Farm, let her know that you are and how many of you are coming. Also, on November the twelfth, Kenny Moore will be at the community center to present a draft concept to the public and the parks and rec committee on the plans for the overall plans for the park. That concept, I guess you could say. So please try to attend that at all possible. That'll be at eleven o'clock.
Yes, sir, it's from eleven to one and then again from two to six.
Say all twelve.
It's gonna be at the community center. We had several amendments to the agenda that came up in work session. Several things are gonna be reached. We have a director's agenda that was passed out tonight. It has these things off of it. Uh, there was one budget amendment that we referred back to committee. At budget finding committee meeting, um, the charter review committee was taken off the talking layers. Wanted to make sure he had all the people at one time and I had to bring it up two, three times. So that's why I'm here. And also, uh, the county's due before the top of Saturday, we're gonna do it next month. Because he's been out of town for the last week or so. And I'll get, make sure that we have that. But I think those have been taken off of this agenda. So I think this, this reflects effectively is what we have of course tonight. So I would entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
Move to Ms. Lynn Sue Johnson, Commissioner Ferguson, second.
All in favor, approve the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is done. We always like to ask any citizens that have a response or would like to speak to any of the agenda items on our agenda tonight to come up and sign in at this time so that you can be recognized at the proper time. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to any of the items on the agenda? Anyone wishing to speak tonight? We'll move on. County Mayor for, Mayor Tannen.
I know we're in a kind of a time pressure for some of the county commissioners when we go to council. So a lot of the stuff I covered last week, the oral couple additions, I will add. Uh, the first one is the landfill. The construction on that has already started. They were actually moving soil and things around today. So, uh, from the time they began construction to the time of end, they said they'd take about five weeks. So they actually began about last Thursday. So hopefully about mid-November, they'll be done with that. They are working on that project seven days a week, so they're going straight through. Next is the street skate project. We did have the pre-construction meeting in my office last Friday. Everything went really well. Uh, covered issues such as the street closings. Uh, they're gonna give us at least forty-eight hours notice before they close any of the streets here so we can let the public know and also so the emergency services are made aware of any street closings so everyone can plan accordingly. Uh, we did cover the, uh, the bricks that were donated through the downtown revitalization committee. Those bricks are gonna be preserved and given to the public works department. We have a building out, the power con facility. We're gonna store those in until we find a project for use for those bricks. Uh, did hold a homeless forum this morning. Actually had more people attend than I expected. I think it went really well. Uh, Commissioner Russell was there as the veteran services officer. I think she made a contact that's rather gonna help her address, uh, the issue of veteran homelessness and getting them services. And, uh, unlike some of the conferences I went to, as soon as it ended, not everybody ran out the door. They actually stood around and talked to each other. So I think it went very well. I've gotten feedback from some of the organizations that were there and they were very glad that it, that it occurred and they were very happy with the outcome. I think we've got a, a good base to build off of is go forward trying to adjust homelessness and tries to account. And that's not just for talking about the people here on the street. That could also apply to people that are facing homelessness, people that may be looking at going into the criminal justice system and also veterans that maybe have, are facing homelessness because of mental health issues or substance abuse issues. I think we had a real good meeting today. I think we'll make progress on that going forward. Uh, for the county website, right now, it looks like the most probable date for the training for the departments that are gonna be editing their own pages. Right now, it looks like it's gonna be November first from about nine to noon. So, uh, hopefully we'll move forward on that as the website nears completion and that we'll be able to take it over and each department will be able to edit their own page and put our current up-to-date information. Uh, we did receive notice from the comptroller's office that the budget has been accepted. So we're glad to have that behind us. And also, the comptroller's office, uh, the gentleman that we worked with during the budget process called last week when Ms. Thomas was on vacation and just wanted to let us know how appreciative he was for how our budget was put together. And he said it's very easy to get through. You could really tell what was on there. He went through it in a couple of hours, even with some distractions, and really was able to understand it for the first read-through. So he was very appreciative of how we put that budget together. And so I would thank Ms. Thomas that she's the one that put it together. Really just say she did a great job on, on putting that together so it's as clear as possible. And for the last item, uh, I did send some, we did send some flowers to the memorial for Betty Lou Taylor. And the family did send a thank you card back. So they were very appreciative of the flowers sent to that memorial service. I just wanted to pass that along. If anybody wants to see the card, I have it with me. So I just wanted to pass that along, let the commission know that they were appreciative. And I also talked to some of the whites when Mr. White passed away. They were very appreciative for any of your well wishes and thoughts for the family as well. And that's my report for the evening unless there's any questions from any of the commissioners on anything I presented.
Anyone have a question for the mayor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go into committee reports. Budget finding, met our cover on the twenty-fourth.
We did. A lot of the files that we were discussing now is discussed. There were, I don't think any further to turn down. I think everything, we've been in policy agreement.
And county buildings, codes of government enforcement, met on September twenty-fourth. And several items, divisions, they've come over. There was no old business, now new business. Jimmy Hunter, Director of Senior Assistant Center, uh, has brought up a bit of a problem for our attention as far as with Neil Humblew and some others that are using the facility for other things when they have to be gone. Uh, who's gonna be in charge, who's gonna be responsible for rebuilding the facilities there? And that's one thing we were, we were looking into. Uh, there were several suggestions and we're gonna bring them back up at our next meeting. Who has to try to bring some ideas, things to do to correct that. Also, uh, there was some discussion of selling some property. Uh, there's a road over here, uh, behind a building on Turf Street, it's Wilton Street, some corner. That's basically an alley that's been abandoned. Uh, we're gonna possibly declare it abandoned property and either lease it. Sadly, we're looking at options on that as well as how it would be handled. We're looking at the possible uses for the courthouse as far as the office space over here. Possibly moving the elections offices over here. We would have to probably build a better handicap ramp and some things like that. So we're still looking into those things. And, um, we don't, I think it's consensus of the committee that we don't want to bring offices back in here until we make some improvements to the building that we feel are absolutely necessary before we start moving back in. Unless it's something on a temporary basis and one of the offices that are already in good shape. Mayor, we had an update on the committee progress on the dirt and uncat properties in the county. And we have a few poor patches in the works right now that I think once we get a little, make a little correction for those, it might go back to many of them. Was discussion on this, uh, reducing the lot size. They have to go before the planning commission begin, uh, and then back to us to final, final decision on that. But that was basically the building and codes. We, we will have another meeting this month. We have to thank you. Uh, it's based on outside meeting, met our cover ten.
We did, and it's certainly was our basic, what we did just goes on over view. The status of school system around and everything looked like, uh, God often started. No problems except still leaving most of it. That's a big problem anywhere you look. The answer is, you pay it with good money for it, you're liable to lose it. And I believe that. That's according to what you said, what we did during that.
Agent Taylor, say, executive committee?
Yes, executive committee, met earlier in the month.
October first.
Mm-hmm. And with, uh, several things were discussed. One thing very important, fuel tax was discussed. And after a week of discussion, it was basically decided that we put over the rest of the revenue next year. Second thing is, uh, was three acres, one acre zone, what I just talked about, was referred back to the building committee. Uh, our chief, uh, which was, was still in emergency planning committee. And the mayor talked like it was a government seat and asked me a lot of time on that. And let's see, it was announced by our student representative, the big camera caller, it was, was real estate matter. And we have a lot more, it's pretty much, like, we just agree.
The law enforcement committee met our cover twenty-second, here at courthouse at seven o'clock. Uh, we had two items. One is review of noise ordinance, make recommendations as to how we can be springing or change with the meeting. And, uh, ask every member that's involved with the meeting to look that over. We're trying to gather information from other jurisdictions as to how they, how they create theirs and how they enforce theirs. So we'll be taking that back at the end of this month. Also, there's a dispute that's arisen between the sheriff and director's school, so that's our host. Um, high school building, uh, buildings, building of such. Uh, we discussed that. It was our convention that it was not, uh, our map, the saw that's stripped between the sheriff and the director's school. And, uh, I think that that will be more found in the near future. Parks and Rec? We all didn't have one. Prison oversight, met our cover ten?
We did. Warren was there. He didn't have a complete list that he usually does of how all the staff is going. He gave a real good overview of it. He also discussed the incident that happened out there a few weeks back, the lady getting attacked. She's seen, been coming along pretty good, but she don't lose her beliefs with time. And he's been working really close with that and, uh, also, uh, told us the next month, the next meeting, which was anywhere, that we didn't have another one of his assistant ones there. So, you know, he should meet another one. I think he's well up to thirty-three, he's done that too, although he's got another one coming, pushing out. Good meeting, very good overview.
Parkinson oversight, met our cover twenty-first, this is the board meeting.
We did, got to go on, please finance. We know we're selling lines with the mayor and, uh, to me, it's nothing that they complain about. So meeting went very well.
Are there, are there other invite for the, uh, finance? Well, if we can.
It's directly against the charter.
The charter says that you have to have it. It doesn't say that it has to be standing alone committee. So there's problems with, with the motion finding. But it could be something that say the patch doesn't raise there for. So, uh, we're looking at that. And that's one thing that we'll make sure this patch four being started and the board making changes and file a little extra time.
I would, I would ask a really good chance for you to answer that, because I mean, I'm not your last question. I would love to just, just wait for you, you know, before you go on to the jury. You know, that's the reality, because we do, we do work.
Are there any other four change bids that have been missing? Any other four?
No meeting. Not a meeting, no meeting.
I think, I not, didn't say the need to go on just down the list where we do that there are meetings. And it's kind of, in my opinion, makes it look bad to our gallery that no meeting, no meeting, no meeting, I'm doing our job. So I was trying to get away from that, which is why we discussed the ones that we needed to have. Uh, our active business tonight, we have several items. First is appointments. We have the duty of the package. Two appointments to the emergency communications district board, or federal government's nine-one-one board. These are, uh, served, all members of this are served by position. Uh, the board is made up by their position who holds that position within the county. These are both reappointments. Camera White, who is our current host master. Jerry Hound, who is representing the urban services district. He currently serves and these are both reappointments. Have a motion to approve these?
Yes.
Commissioner Greger?
Second.
Second, I'm in talk. Commissioner Greger makes a motion, Commissioner Hart makes a second.
Which group, the first one?
I believe they are four-year terms. Starting in January, March twenty-second. Looking from the back of that sheet, the left from nine-on-the-board. Any other questions? If we have a motion to approve these? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is done. Next, we have two resolutions for consideration tonight. The first resolution, twenty nineteen, twenty-four, six seventy-one, is a resolution to assign signatory authority to the commission chair and pro pen. This will discuss some high facts there months back about these individuals. I think we've seen them either the budget finding committee or the detective committee or both. But we failed to do a resolution on it. So this is to follow through on that at this time. And this is so that if the mayor is in capacity to write a panel, the chairman can sign checks, the documents for the county, or the postal is throughout the pro pen. And that's all this is. Any questions about this?
Any motion approved?
Have a motion by Commissioner Volner. Second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next resolution is resolution twenty nineteen, twenty-five, six seventy-two. It's a resolution for Tri County Electric Newship Corporation on the Tennessee wrong and accessibility grant application. Parts of the grant application in the state, um, letters of, uh, recommendations from the bodies, the governing bodies of individual elected officials, things of this nature. Helps him a great deal when they're scoring these grant applications. It kind of gives him extra points, if that makes sense. So that, that's all this is. We've done it every year, I think, for at least the last two years, maybe three years or more. But, uh, any questions about this? Commissioner Ellis? Have a motion to approve, Commissioner Jones? Second from Commissioner Ford? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is done. And if you did have a letter in your, uh, package that you, if you're so inclined to, uh, designate individually as commissioner, we turn those into big, these in fact, if you're claiming them, I know several have already been turned in. We've mailed several, but if you still have yours, you can turn it in. I will make sure that it's mailed or you can mail it yourself if you're so inclined. Also, real quickly, I'd like to give you an update, uh, on where we are with, uh, vital communication to the Tri County. I know that as commissioners, we are often asked questions about where they are at and where, when are they gonna get the meeting and all these types of things. So I tend to give you an update on that. I mentioned Paul Thompson and Link, uh, last week and this twenty days. Right now, there's only eight hundred locations in the trials from the Southeastern Governor Counties are now connected to, to the wrong. In terms, we can honestly say that the trial county is now a deep community. They make a big deal out of it, mental management being a deep community. Well, we are a deep community, but you could that better, okay? Right now, the services base is about two thousand locations, two thousand individually, individuals. There's about eight hundred that have signed up for it at this time. So my most tag are, I think the tag, they're taking rates to forty-five, forty-seven percent. Something that's, that may include about what was projected, what was expected. Uh, they really haven't, uh, done a lot of, um, marketing yet to try to sign up people. Um, most of them, half of them have been on the base offering on fifty-fifty, uh, their vital protection. Uh, they are predicting that they would have about a hundred more homes on plan by the end of the year, by the end of the year. About a hundred more. Uh, they are gonna apply for these grants, program to get, to get the grants and they can do a little bit more with it. The project completion, right now, they're thinking spring of next year, they would have all the homes in the area that they're gonna be agents or, uh, voting. So hopefully by late spring, early summer. A lot of that depends on whether, things of that nature. So that's, that's where we're at. It's proceeding very well. Haven't had any negative comments that, that I know about. Mayor, do you know of any negative comments from people that have signed up for it?
Not, not of anyone that signed up for it. I've only heard very positive comments and they were all grateful to have it, so.
I know it's like a new world, my house. I'm really glad to be back. So I just wanna give you an update on that as it comes over. Moving on. Next, we have budget amendments. These budget amendments were all approved by budget finding committee. Most, all of them are infine transfers or lenses coming in, either grants or donations or things of that nature. Uh, we can take these, uh, collectively or we can pull them out. If somebody wants to pull one out, we'll go that route. Commissioner Wall, take a motion to the board?
What, you should, you?
It's done. We're gonna take it collectively and most take it collectively. So, uh, Commissioner Wall, second, or Commissioner Jones? Anybody want to pull any of these out of the one-on-one phone? Anybody have any questions about this? I think all of them are explaining, if you need to. They're all, all of these are money coming, bigger than a grant, but, uh, have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? We do not, we need to go through all of them. One forty-one, General's Food Fund, basically the same thing, he's putting up the inventory, seeing for grants that have come in, and national food programs, uh, subsidy from the Art Commission, uh, Walmart donations, state food grants. There was one, the first one, is Health Services, it was a discrepancy, the work list is, you could place it on the, uh, the original budget, and this is to reconcile it and bring it back in. If we take all of these together, we're going out separately, we see any? What's with? Have a motion by Commissioner Ford to approve the all together. Have a second by Commissioner P. D. Any questions? If I understand. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one powder tonight, uh, here with six ten. Do you have any other, or, or, or? Any questions? Have a motion by Commissioner Wall to approve the note reading. Second by Commissioner Lindsey Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there any other business, with the commission? Any other business tonight? Have a motion to adjourn by Mr. P. D. And second, uh, Mr. Johnson. All in favor, we got a, we got a, we got a, we got a...